Okay, I'm calling this meeting to order, please. Please join us in beginning our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment. Okay, seeing as there's no public comment, would someone from the board care to review our norms, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Diane.
Um, we will focus on student outcomes, as a board we will. Be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
Great, thank you. Okay, do I have a recommendation to approve the minutes from our meeting on January 13th? Okay, moved by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Julie, any comments?
Yes, please. Um, in reference to the action on the wellness policy?
Yep.
Um, I think that there should be more comments there, or mine should be deleted. There was quite a discussion about, um, you know, my understanding was is that we should try to clarify, and I was trying to clarify what our policy was going to be, and I just feel as though, even though I do believe that, you know, maybe it's the wording, and maybe I probably used them, but I was, the reason I brought it up was I was concerned about the individuality of our school not having the choices, and at the time when I was talking, I didn't realize, you know, that we're gonna stick, hopefully, with the feast, and kids will be allowed to bring in cupcakes and celebrate those birthdays, and so I think that there needs to be more, or there could be less. So that's what I'm saying.
And I, I agree with you, I do remember there being a discussion in regards to, you know, honoring traditions and, and things that we've done in the past.
So we could change it to say that, that there was a discussion with board members, and they stress the importance of honoring traditions that have been established in the schools.
Because I'm trying to clarify a policy. I think that that's what was important to me at the time, was it's not whether or not Parker can have this or that, it's, it's more about-
The culture.
The culture of, of being able to do that.
Right.
And to clarify that, it was for things that are, weren't they available for sale at the school?
Food, food that are served not served.
So like if somebody was served-
More so than even what a child brings from home to eat for lunch.
Right, that was the-
Right, it was more about school-wide celebrations, classroom celebrations, things like that.
And that's what I wanted to make sure of, so.
Are you good? Got a change? What have you got?
Take out Diane's comment, put in discussion about honoring traditions are already part of the culture.
Because we're trying to clarify a policy.
There you go.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
Then the committee that's developed will have a better understanding of where we believe they should go.
Okay, so-
So then I'm okay with it, and then you can look forward, that was my discussion.
I have one little, little point, um, that on my second, I'm not the chair anymore, so, that's from, on the board organization, and-
Thank you. We'll get that.
Okay.
Yeah, right there.
So then, do we need to have another motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Yeah.
So we would vote this one down? Right?
Just, just take it, just take, just take a motion for somebody to- I would ta, I would make a motion that we accept the amendments to the minute and approve as amended.
Motion made by Julie, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved. Five-zero. Okay. Jackie?
Um, I want to introduce, I don't know if all of you know Skylar LeBombarde, here's Skylar here.
I do not. Hi, Skylar.
He is our Director of Teaching and Learning. So Skylar has put together a student growth report that he's gonna share with us tonight, and as you as a board get more in-depth, and we all get better as a policy governance board with our ends policies, you'll see the shift in the future where it's more focused to the priorities that have been established, but this is just gonna give you an overview of student growth.
I'm just gonna ask if you pardon me sitting down, it's kind of spot to stand here.
And Skylar, the board has a lot of charts in their packet, right?
Yes, I'm starting on packet page six.
Just touch it, cancel, it's easier.
So, uh, the presentation will be a hybrid of kind of how to look at some of the charts, and then I'll refer to whatever board page packet that you're looking at. So, start stuff with me, because I don't believe I've met any of you before, so. Skylar LeBombarde, the Director of Teaching and Learning at BRSU. So I was gonna start tonight's presentation around staff and student numbers, because it's really important to know who we are and who we serve. So this is across the SU. Some of the data that you'll see, some of the graphs are SU across all schools, because it's important to have that as kind of a baseline to see if you're fitting in with the rest of the schools, and then it's more Medowee-specific as well. So, here you have enrollment, so this is K-6, so there's no pre-K included in this enrollment, and it's the last two years. So you can see a decline in enrollment a little bit from 1819.
And is this in our packet scout? Yes, it is.
Yes, yes.
It's on packet page six.
Yep, got it.
And then free and reduced numbers by school, this is what the SU looks like. We pulled out Courier Memorial School because they are a universal free lunch school, so these numbers are a little bit more difficult to really track down. So you'll see a second school on the list. So on packet page seven, you will see, this is representative of the SU. So you'll see levels of education as far as degrees and advanced credits, and that is according to our pay scale, which usually is pretty accurate with actual levels of education. On occasion, there might be someone with a master's degree, but they have bachelor's plus whatever would compensate them a little bit more fairly or competitively. So that is according to our payroll, so it's a pretty decent distribution. And this is the SU numbers, obviously, the staff members, we don't have that many at Medowee, but on packet page seven, you can see Medowee is broken out. And I think that it's a pretty good representation if you look at size of bars as far as years of experience, pretty similar representation.
It is. Oh, mine is white.
And if anytime you need, if you need more explanation or want more time, just stop us, we're a small group, so, okay?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to approach it, save questions for the end, or questions as they come. I kind of prefer questions as they come, because there's a lot to unpack. Okay? So we're gonna take a look at essentially two assessments, one is the State SBACK, it's actually three assessments, one's a Vermont Science Assessment, which is new as of last year. It previously looked a little bit different and wasn't computer-based, so last year was the, the field test of that assessment, and then we're gonna look at our local assessments, and that's MAP tests, and I'm sure you've probably heard or seen MAP test results before, and I'll get into that. We just had a test window close last week, so we have the latest and greatest. So again, SBACK, it stands for the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, and it serves as a state test for students in grades three through eight. On packet page eight, you get BRSU level, SBACK results, you'll see three years of that. It didn't quite come across, I'm sure, because you don't have colored packets, but you'll see it.
If you look online.
Yeah, if you look online, you get, you get it coming, right?
Yeah.
So you can see it compares our performance as an SU up against the state. So there's a couple of things to consider or understanding really what the assessment is about. It's adaptive, so that is to say if a fourth grader takes a test, it's not all fourth grade questions, around 60% of those questions will be at the fourth grade level, and then the test will adjust either higher or lower to kind of meet the kid where they are. A common misconception with SBACK is that it's apples to apples, kid to kid, that every kid takes the same fourth grade test, and that's just, it's not accurate. Yeah. So, and as, as I said before, so that, that works for both math and ELA. The AOE considered the 1819 test for science to be a field test, it was never validated, they never went through, uh, it, so with science, the previous assessment was very hands-on practical science, and it went from that to a computer-based test. So it used to be our schools would receive a big box of materials, and they would conduct experiments and go through the whole scientific method. That's changed, for better or for worse, we don't really know. And the growth measure for science is on a three-year cycle, so fifth grade takes that test. They would then, if they stay in a Vermont school, they would then take that test again in eighth grade. So for Medowee students, they're just taking it once in fifth grade. And that's why on packet page eight, you only see the one measure for science. You see it for five and eight, because that's all of the SU, but if we go to packet page eleven-
What is, what are the axes here? Is it grade level, and then the vertical is?
The vertical is percent proficient.
Percent proficient, okay.
So on packet page 11, you'll see the latest, the 1819 data.
So how do they figure that out, the percent proficient?
So it's the, it's on a scale score.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the total number of students, they set four different levels of cut scores, and because it's adaptive, there's no like straight, they get X amount of this correct, and that equates to a scale score, because it's adaptive, it's a little bit more complex than that, but it's computer scored as well. There's no human input as far as that goes.
Right. But I guess, I guess I was meaning like more what does that mean than how do they, they, there's, there's gotta be some sort of arbitrary, this means you're proficient, and then we break it into how, a percentage of proficiency?
It's not necessarily a percentage of proficiency, they, so they, they end up with, I can't remember the specific unit that they use, or what they call their unit, but it's somewhere in the realm of like 2,400 is considered proficient. So it's not percent proficient in a sense that kids got this percentage of questions correct, it's percent of overall students that we had enrolled, and X amount of those kids out of the 30 kids at a grade level, that's how that percentage is calculated.
Okay.
So the, the sample size for Vermont would be every, if we look at packet page 11, the first two bars, it would be the first, the first bar is all of your third graders at Medowee, and the second bar is all of the third graders in the state of Vermont, comparative data. So 50% of the third graders in the state of Vermont demonstrated proficiency on the ELA SBACK for third grade. 59% of your third graders here achieved that.
So we're not talking about science anymore, you went to a different page in our, in ELA?
Packet page 11 just breaks it out by Medowee.
But it was, it's the same-
It's the same.
I was just asking him what the axes are, like grade levels and the percent proficient, what I wanted clarification.
That's why I asked, he's mentioning third grade, and I'm still thinking science, and I had, I didn't realize he transitioned to something altogether different, third grade doesn't take science, correct?
Right.
So that's why I was having the lag. So could you go over that again for me?
Sure.
Because I was so invested in science, 90% of the time.
Yeah, so on packet page 11, there is-
Perfect, I'm with you now.
Broken out by SBACK.
I got it.
Sure. So where you see the two bars for Medowee, the first one would be 24% of the fifth graders at Medowee, so whatever your student count is here, 24% of those kids scored proficient.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a level three or above on the SBACK last year. So you're, this represents your current sixth graders.
So that's not really very good.
Well, that would be a good summation, I would think, right?
The state average, right, so the, the state average of fifth graders that were proficient on the science assessment is 38%, and I would say that that's not-
Not very good either.
Not very good either.
Okay.
So it, as I said, it is a field, it was a field test, it was the first time the test is operational.
Yeah, I was gonna say, given the fact that it was the first year, the state might re-look at that test.
But they're gonna be-
Right, because it's on a three-year cycle.
Taken another one, and science is science, you either kind of know it or you don't, you're getting it, and, you know, so if you're being asked a question-
It's interesting going from practical to-
And it could've been wording, there could be some-
There should be a lot of things, but then that would be true in reading the math also.
Is this same test given in other states?
Yeah, but it was the first time they created it.
Do we know how we compare nationally?
They're, we're not given national numbers.
They should have some kind of-
Other states do conduct an SBACK, and yes.
Well, I don't think we do.
First grade and math, either.
Other states that uses it.
Well, not, well, so, you know.
We don't, we're not given national, we're just given state.
Excellent. So does anyone have a educated guess at the difference between like third and sixth grade performance in math? Because it goes down a lot.
I don't know, it's Brooke about that. I'd like to know what Brooke's thoughts are.
I mean, the one thing that we have talked about, even today, my leadership team, when I showed them this data, is that kindergarten first and second are read too. The first-year kids are independently doing any of the reading and doing all of it is third grade, so we always see a dip between second and third grade in general. And at test three, four, and five, they get really good as they get to fifth. Sixth grade, they go down, and it happens because it's a sixth through 12 test.
You're talking NEWA, we're talking SBACK.
Oh, SBACK, yeah.
You need to be on page 11, man.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not really necessarily sure about this particular, yeah, so I don't really know why, third grade.
Well, it was kind of a trend down.
I was gonna say, as an educator, I would say that we historically see that sixth graders don't do as well on tests as the younger grades, because there's a whole lot of other things going on with sixth graders. That's why in a lot of schools, they're grouped with seventh and eighth graders, and it's, you know, it's a middle school kind of, there's just other stuff that goes on there, right?
And for third grades, the very first time they've ever had SBACK testing, so it's-
So if you're looking at SBACK math, the state average also declines as well?
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
It's one test, I mean, that, that's the important part of this all, is it is one test event. It is the state test, right? So we use that as our growth, growth measure as to how, you know, the state tells us how successful we are based on our growth on that assessment.
Right.
One of the things that you'll see me discuss is, in general, you'll notice the state bars are all somewhere between that kind of 45 and 55% of all kids in the state are proficient on these assessments. So that's challenging to me to think that half of the kids in this room aren't going to be proficient on this assessment. So I, I don't know if it's about the assessment or about the instruction. Yeah, so also on page 11, you'll see a bar, a horizontal graph across, so what that is, is that is your third through, in, in your case, it would be third through sixth graders, so that's the entire student population that took an SBACK test in ELA and math, and as well as in science. And that is the distribution of scores, so as far as who your level ones are, who your level twos are, who your level threes are, and so on. And that, again, does not break down by grade level, that is just every kid who sat here last spring and took an SBACK exam. This is how it's broken down.
The horizontal bar?
Yes.
Got it. So what do you do with that data? How are you using it to inform our school?
So right now, what we've done is, this data is like fresh out of, like the press, we just got it today, and I showed it to my leadership team today, this afternoon, and then our hope is to bring it to the whole entire faculty, just to talk about it, see what they have. We'll probably follow a protocol that we've learned, just about some of the eye notices and the wonders, and then be able to take and set goals based on that information. So we'll be using it also for our continuous improvement plan, and as we set goals. So we'll be using this as, we'll kind of really go through a process and do it with the small group and a big group, and, and then figure out if there's trends, and then set goals based on that.
The continuous improvement plan requires that the schools identify three goal areas, so I think as the, as the staff looks at this, you know, they're gonna need to prioritize, where do we have the greatest area of concern? What do we, you know, and they're supposed to do a root cause analysis, what do we think is causing this? Do we have a curriculum issue? Do we have a, of an instructional strategy issue? So that's what the team comes around and, you know, makes, has a discussion around that. And so, I mean, you're asking the right questions, and it's the questions that the teachers should take a look at, too.
So how, so how long do we have to wait, though? I mean, I know over ti, obviously you can't correct anything this year. I mean, you know, I realize that, but when would, would the board get feedback, and when would the board get feedback onto that? Because I'm concerned, I think the numbers are not so good.
Yeah.
They're just not. So you've got areas of concern, at least for me, so when are you going to be able to say, this is what we've identified, and this is how we're going to tackle that? What's your timeframe, I guess, maybe?
So the state is asking us to switch the continuous improvement, like kind of idea of plan, which we learned that last week, that they're hoping that we will gather information and submit a new continuous improvement plan, hopefully in March, April-ish, and then you will, as a board, see that plan, once we work through that.
And I think too, I mean, we talked about today, I had a principal's meeting today, and we talked about the importance of aligning the continuous improvement plan with ends policies and setting priorities for what your budget looks like in the future. So we talked today about, it, it made sense to me, when you think about the timeline of that, that the principals right now are working through this in the spring. They meet in July for their retreat, and, you know, I suggested to them today that then they formulate, what's our instructional plan? Like where are our priorities? When we look at this data, and it may be the same in some schools, but it may be different, you know? And so what are your priorities going to be for your school that you're gonna focus on going into the, the new school year? And then that would be shared with you, you know, I'm suggesting that boards wait and have their retreat in August, so the, they've had a chance to do that, they share that with you, and you, you know, have an opportunity to talk about those priorities that are being recommended. So I think it's important, you know, when you look at a policy governance board, it's really important that you get more detailed with what those priorities are going to be, so that you'll know, okay, so we've got an issue here, we're looking at, we have some concerns, and maybe it's science, maybe it's mathematics. What goals have been identified by the school, by the leaders in the school and by the teachers? And how are, what do we need, you know, when you think about your budget, are there some things we need to do differently to support that? But you should be, you know, then we'll monitor, we'll say, okay, we're gonna get back to you again in February and say, here's where we are, here's the growth that we're seeing. And so that continuous improvement plan should be adjusting and shifting all the time to meet those goals.
I have some, go ahead.
Have we seen, so on packet page eight, there's, it's BRSU-wide, but there's a, you know, there's three years. Have we seen that presented to us as just Medowee?
And that was my, gonna be my question, actually, is-
And that was my question.
We can look at the, we, we can see BRSU-wide, three years' worth of data, and statewide, but I'd be curious what Medowee's data looks like for three years. I know, you know, I, I think our cohorts here are so small that we know that a few, sometimes just two kiddos, can throw our numbers off dramatically. So I'd really like to look at growth for each cohort over time to see, you know, the, the numbers aren't real pretty on some of these other pages, for, like say for sixth grade, but where was sixth grade two years ago? That's what I'd like to know, number one. And then I'd als, I'm also curious, Brooke, when you receive this data, you, you're receiving it on each cohort, are you receiving it on each child as well?
We have individual student reports that we hand out at parent conferences, so this Thursday, parents will receive their individual student growth over time, yeah.
Because that's, I mean, honestly, as an educator, and as a board member, to me, that's more important than anything else, you know? So, so maybe, maybe, maybe this, I don't know, maybe the sixth grade score in math wasn't real great, but if those kids are making progress, if they're making growth, if they're, if they are making a year's worth of growth each year, or maybe, maybe 14, or 15, or 16 months' worth of growth each year, which would be wonderful, then, then we're doing our job.
Yep.
So to, you know, sometimes I think we look at figures that, you know, 32%, 39%, 40%, and we go, yeah, that's not so great. Well, maybe it is okay for this cohort, maybe it really is. So I, I, I don't wanna get bogged down on these numbers aren't real pretty, I'd really like to see the three years' worth of, of, of scores for our kids, and, and I'd like to know, are our students making growth? That's what I wanna know.
So the agency of education, last year, or, yeah, I guess last year, put out something called the annual snapshots, or different way that they report on schools. Traditionally, you'd be able to go online and click Medowee Community School and see student outcomes, see all of this stuff. The agency made a push to use growth data, and they, they dump student outcomes into a tool that then shows them the level of growth that you're making compared to others. So this is very much achievement, that, the data that you're looking at is school-specific now. The AOE is supposed to update the snapshot annually, they have not yet put this data in the annual snapshot. They said spring, at that point, the data's kind of old, but essentially, the state of Vermont has the, the measures in place to make it the public face of student data, or student growth, is its growth, it, it goes into equity, you'd see all of these measures, but the state has not yet updated that. So, but we can, I can certainly access the three years, and we can build something for sure, that's the will. Okay, so that is SBACK, so that's the state-level assessment. So here's the thing to keep in mind, like you said, end size, so that this number of kids that we're using, it makes for great swings. If one kid doesn't do well on that test, it's a certain percentage. So, and other things to keep in mind, we kind of went over those, science was a field test.
Or if a kid refuses to, their parents won't let them take the test, we have to take a zero.
Yep. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's your, it's true, right? I mean, sometimes it, they're, those kiddos are the ones that you really need for your, for your scores, and you lose them.
So the overall, like kind of macro-level observations is that as an SU, our kids are, you know, plus or minus 5% of that state average, and that's kind of where our kids are living at this point. So to go to the Northwest Evaluation Association, NWA, they do, they put out a test called Measures of Academic Progress, MAPS test, it's the local assessment for kids in urines since So here's some information about that, students test three times yearly, kindergarten is only delivered in spring, because it's not necessarily developmentally appropriate for them to sit at a computer and take a test, that's two tests that are about an hour-long apiece. The test is normed on 4 million students, it's adaptive. Again, in nature, this is kind of more adaptive than SBACK is, SBACK has a solid chunk at the grade level to which the student is assigned, and MAPS in general is more adaptive from the get-go. It provides a percentile score, so the difference between a percentile and a percentage, a percentage would be like you got five out of 10, it's 50%. A percentile is, when you line up 10 kids, the kid that stands in number five, the median, is the 50th percentile. So essentially, you can read, if someone's in the 50th percentile, that's average for their demographic. So if they're a third grader and they're in the 50th percentile, that means they are an average third grader. Okay? So this, if, we use it locally to measure growth, because we, we take measures of, of growth, and this is put out as a RIT score, which is just kind of a number that's very difficult to wrap your head around, it's calculated, it's just the, the metric that they use. So this would be the norm group represented as percentile, as I said before, the 50th percentile is, is dead in the middle of that, all those kids that it's normed on for whatever age range, in the 50th percentile is your average kid. Okay, so this would be the distribution, so what you're, you're going to see is you're gonna see a horizontal line that looks somewhat like this, and I would say the goal here is to have more kids as level three, more than 50% three and fours, right? Because then that would mean you're above the norm group. So if you flip to packet page 12, again, this is SU, this is the last four years historically. You can see in, if we look at reading, you'll see in 1617, we had a grand total of 43% of the kids meeting above the 50th percentile, right? And then over the four years, you can see that that number goes up to about 57% of our kids performing above the 50th percentile. Okay, so this goes, that kind of explains it a little bit further, here's the percentile ranges that each level is represented by. So in this example, 22 and 48, 70, 70% of the seventh graders performed above the 50th percentile on that particular screen grab that I took. Okay? So if we go to Medowee-specific.
Page 16.
Um, it's gonna be a few pages here. If you're looking at packet page 16.
And when is this test? What's the date?
Three times a year, this, this most recent one was last, the last three weeks.
So it was in the fall, oh, just-
Winter.
Just winter.
Just finished.
Yep.
I thought you adjusted the SBAK in January.
Then we do it in April.
Okay, so, this that you adjusted was NWA's.
And that's three times a year.
Okay, I, yeah, I just was confused as to which was which, okay. This is winter then, okay.
So, these are the, then this is the current?
Yes, the most current.
Here, okay.
Yep. And again, this is performance data. Growth is measured a little bit differently and I can show you what that looks like as well. Questions on how this is represented? The percentage and percentile kind of gets a little cloudy for some folks. And to Brooke's point and something that she mentioned earlier, because the test window just ended, the student result page will go with parents very soon, so they'll know where their kiddo is. So, because this is end size concerns again, we looked at growth as an SU, so our sample size, instead of the twenty-five to thirty-five kids you might have at a grade level here, the sample sizes, since it's SU, it's about a hundred and ten for any given grade level. And this is winter nineteen, so January of twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty, so that's three different test events, winter, spring, well, it's fall, spring, fall, winter. So, there's the summer gap in between. So, the NWA puts out a growth projection that says, a kid that's currently performing at this level, here's what we see, the average growth in our norm group. So, these are, this is represented as the percentage of students that have met the projected growth. So, the additional caveat that NWA puts out is that sixty percent of those kids hitting that norm growth, you'd expect about fifty percent. Does that make sense? Again, it's kind of going back to that percentile thing. So, sixty percent is considered a good number to see. And this is across the entire SU. So, Brooke had mentioned earlier about the test events and how after second grade, you can see that there's a spike and it looks really great, seventy-three percent of the kids are hitting their, their projected growth. That's kind of higher than the NWA says that we should expect. And then there's a stark contrast when they go into third grade. So, that test event changes from a kid taking a test with a headphone that reads the screen to them and they classify words and things like that when we're talking about ELA. They count objects and click on things when it comes to math. When they get into third grade, the headphones are out, they have to read things and it goes to word problems in math and reading selections off of a computer screen. So, so that's why that there's kind of that stark contrast. And then you can see, in general, it trends up and then it gets back to sixth grade where it's, it goes from a three to five test to a six-plus test. So, that six-plus test is the same test that a eleventh grader takes. But it's adaptive, so it pulls from the same question pool. So, that is that. And this is a look at kind of what an average teacher at your school might see after a test window closes. And this is high achievement, low growth. Like, you could see it's a balance between the axes are achievement and growth. So, we like to see kids, certainly by the end of the year, trending as high achievement and high growth. Kids that are down in the pink area, usually those are the kids that teachers want to know. So, each of these data points, the purple dots are a reading assessment and the plus signs are a math assessment. So, we can go, you know, if there weren't personally identifiable information here, we could hover over those in the portal that we look at and it tells us the student's name, what their performance looks like and actually quantifies their growth as well. This is a common site for teachers. They see this report after every test event, so they can pick out kids that say, you know, they didn't make the growth we expected. Or, you know, the orange area is not necessarily a bad area to be in, it's taking that kid that may not have previously been engaged and they're making great growth, they're just not to the point where they're high achieving, right? So, it's if, I, personally, if I was a teacher, I'd use this report plenty of times as a teacher, I would probably hover over that kiddo and say, he's growing, what can we do? What are we doing differently to help this kid grow and let's continue to do that, right? So, that's the type of conversations that happen in teacher meetings and Brooke probably facilitates conversations around this specific graph. So, when we look at NWA, if we go back to packet page twelve and we look at the norm group range at the very bottom where it's twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five quartiles, and then we look at the current overall SU performance, the distribution is well within that normative range. So, this is the type of thing that we adjust for end size, right? So, instead of having your, your small group at your specific school, we look at it as an overall system. How I use this data in my position, as I meet with principals, talk to them about how this bears out by their school and if there are any significant shifts from what we might expect, we would talk about how to intervene or how to provide additional support financially or otherwise, as far as, you know, purchasing materials, providing professional development on specific areas, those types of things. So, the second bullet there is a fourteen percent increase in students achieving the fiftieth percentile or better and that comes from, from sixteen, seventeen to nineteen, twenty. You can see that the shift kind of goes left as far as level three and that's, that's a good sign. And again, I already identified the significant decrease in the percentage of students reaching their projected growth from second to third grade. It is a phenomenon that we see frequently. There's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of predictable. One of the things that we've identified as trying to address some of that kind of decline from second into third grade is really focusing on early literacy skills, specifically foundational skills, things like phonemic awareness and explicit phonics instruction, so this, kind of the science of decoding, encoding words and reading, because we know when those kids sit down at that third grade test, they're inundated with text and they have to read it and comprehend it and understand it. So, that has led us from the SU to push out some materials for K to two teachers. Hagerty is a phonemic awareness program and Foundations is a structured phonics instruction program. So, it's, it's pretty cookie cutter as far as here's the rules of the English language and kids manipulate sounds and they move syllables and it's research-based as well. So, this is our year two of implementation. So, last year, we purchased all the materials for all the teachers, we had them trained and they dove right in. But in order for us to see impact, it kind of takes some time to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity, that's kind of the key buzzword around this specific program to begin with. So, the early teacher feedback, we can't quantify it yet because our kids haven't had two solid years of phonics instruction to get to that third grade. Kind of phased it in, K one last year, it's happening in second grade this year, so next year's third grade MAPS test, we could see a significant impact. Early teacher feedback, just kind of anecdotal, is that the lowest readers that they, that they have are higher than they've ever been. So, that means when they receive an incoming class into second grade, those kids that chalked out as the lowest reading skills are higher than, than those teachers are used to receiving. So, whether that's a result of implementing this program or not is debatable because we don't have the quantifiable data to support that yet, but that's where we are. So, in addition to academics, obviously, we want to take care of all, all of our kids' social emotional needs and value their strengths. So, we're going to take a look at social emotional learning and transferable skills and how we approach that individual school. You, you folks use responsive classroom. And then Second Step is also a curricular resource that I know has been kicking around here a little bit. So, social emotional learning is defined in the presentation as the process through which children and adults understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, show and feel empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships and make responsible decisions. So, what does that look like in practice? I know that responsive classroom practices have morning meetings. I know they go on like clockwork here specifically. PBIS is a system that some of our, well, the five other schools that compose our SU use. And then Second Step is explicit instruction in behavioral, social management, kind of here's how we do things here, it's kind of setting those standard operating procedures and how to react to a social situation that you might not be equipped to handle. So, that's what that is. We've also established a social emotional learning team at the SU level. It's chaired by our behaviorist who consults with schools, he's probably spent some time here before. We have representatives from all six of our schools, they meet monthly. One of my tasks is I kind of oversee that team, so I review their meeting notes. Again, we look for consistency, maybe across our schools, but certainly within buildings as well, consistency of practices, processes and expectations. And if there's something that's way off, so we invested in this Second Step programming in all of our schools, that was an identified area of need. So, if we find Second Step isn't fitting the bill or doesn't fit the culture of a particular building, we would then use that team to identify things that are working in other settings, so other schools. We have six other schools to compare to, or five other schools to compare to. So, what works somewhere might work here if something here is not working. So, we try to take advantage of that and collaborate more than reinvent the wheel.
I just want to mention, we have our own personal social emotional team, so we have two members that go to the SU, they come back and report out at the beginning of our meetings what the big picture is and then we meet and talk about issues within our own building and our next steps. And we're really hoping to send a team to Killington this summer, that will fully focus on the Best Institute and all of these things will be presented in different ways, how to become more trauma-informed, how to support, you know, the social emotional learning of students. So, we're hoping to have at least four or five teachers go this summer with me.
And that Brooke referred to the Best Institute and that, that is put on by Vermont PBIS, so Positive Behavioral Intervention in Sports. Questions about social emotional supports? We also, as, as I'm sure your families are aware now because of the first round of report cards came out, we're reporting on transferable skills. We have five identified transferable skills. And the two that we're reporting out on this year are identified here. Last year, we reported on solely self-direction, that was the only expectation we had for teachers. It's a new, it's a learning process, it's outside of academics. It's, is this kid resilient? Does this kid seek strategies to hone their learning, right? If I had to kind of phrase it in a way that is not this definition. And then are they able to articulate what they've learned or communicate in a way that's clear? So, the plan for this is to eventually get to reporting out on all five, but it's new learning for teachers as well. We put structures in place that kind of, teachers work to establish how to assess self-direction or how to assess these things and there's criteria that exist for those as well. So, they can hold up some student work against some of the criteria to determine whether or not those students are proficient. So, this is a cross-section, it's all fourth graders in BRSU from trimester one this year on self-direction and clear and effective communication. So, you have your, our grading system now, our scoring system is beginning developing proficient. Again, we have about sixty percent of our kids is proficient, thirty, a little over thirty-ish are developing and then, you know, five-ish percent are beginning. And I would say that that's a pretty typical breakdown for this, when we think about multi-tiered systems of support, like that's what you're looking at. You're looking, usually it's like eighty, fifteen, five for any kind of social transferable skill management situation. So, that's not entirely off-track. But again, I think, I think we'll continue to see this blue bar grow a little more as teachers get more comfortable doing it, as kids develop an understanding of what the system is, how I demonstrate to you that I'm self-directed. And then that's what I have.
Thank you, Skylar, for pulling it all together and presenting it all of. Are there any follow-up questions or thoughts or anything?
I hope somebody to understand these charts, but in the meantime, I'm grateful that we have people that can articulate what they mean so well, so thank you.
The good? Okay, thanks, Skylar.
Thank you, Skylar.
Skylar has a long ride home, so he's going to leave us. I know, I'd love to hang out with you.
Great meeting you all.
So, now we're to the part in the agenda where you're going to do a policy governance practice session. So, the purpose of these really is for you, it kind of forces you to dig into those draft policies and to get to know them better. I think that's really the, one of the most valuable things that comes out of this process. So, the way we do this is, you know, you've, you've got the scenario there that's been posed and then you have, we attached your policies for you. So, you go through the policies and you just record, so I did my, I did my homework earlier today, I went through and I said, okay, where do I find, when I start to go through the policies, what numbers speak to that? Okay? So, then you would just say, this is what speaks to that, we do have policy that speaks to this issue and here's where. And then you can go on and answer the question. So, you may not, you may not find, probably you won't find anything in executive limitations because this scenario's not really connected to any executive limitation stuff. But, you know, you'd want to look at ends. I found, I'll just tell you, I found quite a bit in board management and governance process, we found some stuff in there that directly spoke to this scenario. So, again, it's a chance for you to kind of dig into it and then we'll have a conversation afterwards. So, I think the best way to do this is, you know, you partner up and maybe the you three work together and you two work together and you just go through this and see what you can find. So, we'll spend about fifteen minutes, just dig into it, see what you can answer on your sheet and then we'll have a discussion about it. All right? Thanks. So, it's going to be very boring for you. Looks like you did homework.
I didn't even work.
I did not. I have a packet.
I only got it.
You only got it.
And honestly, I'm, this is an exercise in technology. So, I did feel, I mean, I did feel specifically this, she said there's not much, she said there's not much in executive limitations, but I did feel that there was one thing which would be like, if the superintendent's opinion in the board is not in compliance with his own policies, then they were required to point it out to us.
Two-point-eight. Two-point-eight?
Yeah, so, in the first, so, having read the scenario, then I went through and I sort of skipped ahead. Like, what, what has the board already set in relevant policies? So, I said three-point-O, which is basically the global board management delegation, which is that our sole connection to the organ, to the operational organization, its achievement and its conduct will be through the superintendent. So, we're not supposed to be creating literacy programs, we're supposed to be talking to the superintendent, so I felt like that was there.
Yep.
And then for ends, I don't know, I couldn't come up with anything good there. Because it's like, I mean, because again, I go back to three-point-O, I mean, these are our ends and we're, they're supposed to do it. I don't, I mean, unless you're going to tell me that there is no education in English and language arts, we, you don't need to come up with a program, right? And then I came up with, and I did, as I was saying, I did see something in executive limitations, but it basically was like the, if, if you came up, not to, to put it to someone, if, if you came up with this fun program and brought it to the superintendent, I would expect the superintendent to report back to the board that, so not necessarily dismiss it. We were not following our policies.
Oh.
By, by trying to create something.
Okay.
That was the only thing I was.
I would agree with you on that.
And then I found a lot in board management delegation.
Yeah.
Because that's where all the, that's where it all kind of comes to.
Yeah.
Governance process, I said 4.0 number two. Or is that C? I said number two, but there is no number two. Or maybe I did, maybe it was 4.2? Yeah, 4.0, not number two.
4.2. Or a J description.
4.2.
4.2.
Maybe number two. Yeah, that's probably what I was...
Would you prefer to do it as a whole group because you're small? What do you want to do?
I think that'd be good because I can hear their conversation so well that's hard to like break out, unless we went like in other person.
It's fine with me. I mean, we can, I'm happy to go through and we'll just take what people have and then we'll, that's great. So, so the scenario, school board member, you can, you can put any, you know, if has a, had an idea about a children's financial literacy program that she thinks should be implemented, she shared it with the superintendent, but the superintendent did not proceed to implement the program. What should the board member do? So did you find anything in the, in ends policies? So we go and look at ends, is there anything in ends policies that speaks to this?
So I am a speed reader and I completely skipped over the word financial.
Okay.
I was like, okay, we're going right for like, this is a fun literacy program.
I did too.
Financial literacy is, yeah.
I saw this literacy as well.
So is there anything in the ends policy that speaks to that? So let's take a look at it and see, you know, is there?
I mean, besides mathematics, like self-care.
So you maybe could say self-care, you maybe could say mathematics. It's a little bit of a stretch, but not, not, you know.
Critical thinking and problem solving. I mean, problem solving is part of that.
So we would put that, you know, it's not specifically spelled out, but maybe under 1.2, both maybe under 1.1 and 1.2. But it's not specific to financial literacy. Okay. Executive limitations, is there anything in executive limitations that would speak to this? Is there any policy that gives you guidance on this issue?
So I did have one thing which was, I mean, I, I go back to the concept that the board is a board, is a board. And that the only thing I had put, and again, I, I put this when I thought it was just a literacy program. But 2.8, number five, like if we were, if we're out of compliance with our policies and I would consider a board member approaching you with a program and asking you to implement it by themselves, us being out of compliance with our policies as written.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you're right on. So 2.8, 2.5.
So we'd like to be reminded.
Yeah. Absolutely. So that really speaks to it. So under 2.8, 2.5, the board is not in compliance with its own governance process and board management delegation, particularly in the case of board behavior that is detrimental to the work relationship because it stepped out of that relationship as defined by board policy.
Exactly.
Did anybody find anything else in 2.0 and 2.0? That was a good pickup. I said that's really, it's all financial, it's about the workings, it's not really about programming and stu, it's not about ends really, except for the financial part of that. Yeah. Which is not to do with financial literacy. So let's get into board management delegation. So spend some time there, just take a few minutes, go through and see if there's, just tick off anything that grabs your attention. We'll do that on our own first and then we'll talk about it. I want to draw the number.
So in that 3.3, just the beginning.
3.3?
Delegation. It's, I mean, it's talking about the ends rather, so this is the means, is that? So it's saying basically that that is, the board has delegated to the superintendent instead. And then 0.3 and 4, I felt like.
Three and four were, yeah, three and four were, yep. Were very specific to that. Yeah, I agree. I'm a 3.1, number one.
3.11, yep.
Oh, yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Depending on, yeah.
Do anybody else have anything additional?
I don't. I have 3.2, number three.
I did too. Right, okay.
Oh.
3.3, what did I have?
So on 3.2, number three.
I have one.
You have one?
What'd you say, Corey?
Well, Julie, on 3.2, number three, why, how are you using that? Like is, are you saying, or do you see that as?
Well, so if, if we have, so just is she, we don't have a specific end that addresses a financial literacy. So she would, I would kind of interpret that as, is she, is she accomplishing our ends as written?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Sort of like, it's, it's a little hard because it's kind of the opposite, it's like, it's the inverse of what is described there. So that's why it's a little hard to record it down.
Right, right.
Yeah, so that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's much more clear in the 3.1 and 3.11 and 3.12.
Right.
Rest to, right, what the role is.
Yep.
So it's kind of saying, if I'm hearing what you're saying, Julie, that 3.2, 2.3 is like saying you don't really, the superintendent isn't really accountable to that because you don't have that specifically in your ends.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then like the 3.3, number one, we also, I sort of took it that because that's, that kind of goes into detail about specified results for specified recipients at a specified cost. And so asking you to start a program, I mean, these aren't going to be free. And we, we wouldn't have had that discussion about where we wanted to spend our money.
Right.
Well, and that also says policies develop systematically. And that's not systematic.
No.
It's based on an individual or question.
Right, right.
And that's becoming the whole concept of, of the board directing you to do that.
Right. I mean, so the, the thing about policy governance, you could go back, I mean, that, maybe that board member makes a good case for financial literacy is really critical. And then what you do is go back to your ends policies and say, we want to, we want to revise and go deeper. Because we think it should be there. And so now you're going to be accountable for it. You know?
Yeah.
It should, it should be in here someday.
And additionally, to that 3.3, I had number three. Because I took that sort of, that you are authorized to establish procedures, make decisions, take actions, establish practices, and pursue all activities. I assume that that means you're also allowed to not pursue activities.
Right.
Yeah.
If it hasn't been done in accordance.
Yeah, right. I just want to do, I noticed before we go to the floor, because it made me think about this, as we've just looked at student performance of, you know, student performance, that when you're, when you're really operating from a policy governance perspective, you have a lot more teeth as a board to start to really ask those questions. Okay, so, so Jackie, we've seen, now we've looked at data over three years and we're not seeing growth in that area, so what's going on? And, and we want you to get at the heart of that. And, and, you know, we want to see, that's really a priority area for us. So we want you to speak to that. And so then you may go back to your ends policy and go deeper into that and say, this is what, you know, we're not seeing that there's, we're concerned about early literacy for the kids and we have literacy, or we have reading identified, but it's not enough, obviously. So we want to, you know, make sure that that's an area of focus as we move forward. So it gives you a, it really does, I think it really ups the ante. It ups the ante, so the superintendent is, of course, you know, they're dealing too with the principals and working with the system as a whole, like, you know, that we really need to be attending to this. So it just really focuses, I think, that commitment to that ends. Everything should be, the end should be what's at the top and everything should be working towards that. So let's be paying attention to that. We good? Okay, what did you find? There's not a lot in the second, in the end of the 4-0, but what did you find in this?
4.1, it says it in black and white, B, says collective rather than individual decisions.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I figured.
And C, I underlined C as well, strategic leadership more than administrative detail. I mean, we can tell you that we think it's important that there is financial literacy, but we shouldn't pick the program for you.
And then 0.1 and 2.
Yeah. Especially number two, not on the administrative or programmatic means. I mean, we should, we should be focusing on, on making sure that the ends are accomplished, not on the, the way we get there.
Anything else? Did anybody pick up anything else in four?
I had 4.2, number two circle.
4.2, number two?
Yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, that, the broadest levels was kind of what struck me. I mean, seems kind of nitty-gritty to go and find a program and tell you to start it.
Good? I think we're good there. I mean, so that, you have service's purpose, it just kind of makes you dig into looking at that. So if we go back to packet page 18, so according to the board's policies, does this scenario refer to anything that has been, you know, do you think this has been delegated to the superintendent?
Yeah.
This super, this, this decision, if they're going to do this? I mean, I interpret that question... The super, this, this decision, if they're going to do this. I mean, I, I interpret that question, does, this, has this been delegated to the superintendent to deal with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing giving you authority as the board to, to deal with that. Is the, is, does it suggest that the superintendent's in compliance with a reasonable interpretation of the board's ends?
Yeah.
So then on to, um, what action if, um, question three, what action, if any, should the board or board members now take? So if this was real, what would you, is there something you, you know, this is just hypothetical, is there some, if this was real and was issued, is there anything you think you should, you should do about it?
Couldn't we just review, I mean, could we get specific and?
You could.
Review a policy?
Or would you address the member for acting as an individual rather than as, on behalf of the board? I mean, without having voted on anything, or without any authority?
Yeah, I mean.
I would think the chair would.
Yeah, you'd think you might have a discussion under your norms, that, you know,
Right.
have this, like, this is not, is kind of outside of,
Yeah.
you know, our authority.
Yeah. And then we could have a discussion about whether or not the board as a whole feels that, that, uh, we need to be more specific in our ends about financial literacy.
Exactly.
Should we, should we dive into that?
Right, so that leads right to the question, number four.
Number four, exactly.
Yeah. I do think it's important, because you're going to face these things, and I almost, I almost put in, and I was like, oh, I don't know if they want to revisit this. I almost put in, I almost was going to do it on a transportation snip. And maybe I will. Because, you know, that's something, because you're going to run into these things, and so how might we do that differently? And how do we check ourselves, you know, with that? And, um, I will share with you that, that we had a very, um, at the last, um, the last DeConic and Green meeting, their budget meeting, they get into a pre-K conversation that really did, and they, and they've adopted policy governance that really took them outside of their role. And, um, and it was really interesting, and I had a, a couple of my colleagues say to me, Jackie, you just sat there, you didn't say anything. And I'm like, no, because I'm just waiting for the board to self-correct, and they did self-correct. So they had a discussion for about twenty minutes, and then board members were saying, well, wait a minute. I think this is going too far, we shouldn't be going in this direction, here's what we should do, here's what we shouldn't do. But, so you're going to, it's real, you're going to face that all the time, and, and you're, when you're new, it just takes a while, you know? It's like, whoa, should we be going here or not going here? But they did get to a place where like, no, we shouldn't that, we shouldn't have a motion like that, here's what our motion should be. We're getting way too into the weeds around means, and we shouldn't be doing that.
So would the appropriate thing, would, I mean, for that individual to speak to the superintendent and say, you know, I have this idea, can we put this on the agenda to discuss at the next meeting? Would that be?
I, I don't think it should individually get on, I, an individual, I don't think an individual board member can get an agenda item on.
So you, you should just bring it up at the meeting to discuss it?
You could maybe under, you know, when you have other agenda items, someone could say, that would be probably the perfect time to say, if someone under other, when you build your agenda, here's something I'm interested in.
Under board updates?
Yeah, or maybe under board updates, um, and.
Bring it up when you're gathered together as a board?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, how does the board feel about putting this on the agenda for the next time to discuss?
Yeah, yeah. I think so, and, and that might get into a discussion right then about should we even be going there, you know? But, yeah, I think, I think especially too, when you're, when you're new, and you're trying to figure this all out, it's just good, you're a small board, you communicate well with each other, just throw it out there and say, this is something I'm thinking about, how do we navigate that, you know?
But like, the best case scenario of this would be, say, I, I brought up under board updates, this program that I found that I think is perfect, and I want you to implement it. And then someone would check me and say, I think that you're going too far by suggesting a program. What is it that you're really looking to get out of that? Is it addressed in our ends, or do we need to review our ends?
Right.
That would be the best case scenario of getting a, okay.
Yep.
So Jackie, I, I'm feeling like, um, in the first few years of operating under this new way of operating, policy governance, that you might be revisiting your policies frequently.
Yeah.
As you start, as, as things just naturally come up that you realize are not in your policy.
Right. Right.
And that is going to be very unique from one board to another, based on the culture of your community, and what, you know, what the feedback is from your owners.
Right, I mean, so, I mean, Val suggests, and she suggests, and I agree with her, she said, when you first, when you're adopting, like, if you decide in June, and we'll, we'll, I'll bring it to you, like, are you going to go full bore into this, are you going to agree to it? She, she suggests, you just adopt, take them as they are, because you're going to exactly go through that process. You are going to, things are going to happen, and you're going to say, wow, do we need to go deeper into that? And what you're going to get from your superintendent is, so you're going to get monitoring, so you're going to get an interpretation of what it means to monitor that policy, and I think I shared one of those with you.
From the superintendent?
Right, right. We did two point three. You're going to get that, you're going to get two point.
I understood that.
So executive limitations you'll get, um, ends policy you'll get in depth from your superintendent. So, um, but what will happen with the ends policies, as I just explained the process, as I just was talking to the principals today, how I see, and you know, it's taken me so, up some time too, to think about what makes sense around this, how do you do it? But, you know, every year, the prin- the principals, they're looking with their leadership team, what's the data saying about the performance of our kids in our school? Where do we have places that we need to do some work on?
Financial, not just.
That we're concerned about.
That was really, yeah.
You know, that we're concerned about that. And so then I see the, the folks involved with that saying, yeah, that needs to be part of our improvement plan, we need to be dealing with this. And so then that comes to, you'll get, you'll be, that'll be shared with you. Here's a continuous improvement plan, this is what we're thinking about, here's why, here's why we're concerned, here's where we want to see that growth. And then, when that reporting outcomes at that ends policy, you know, you're not going to get, I mean, it's unrealistic to think you're going to get a report out on every single part of ends in depth. But you're going to get a report on, on here's what we've prioritized, and here's what we really, you know, here's what we really need to, we've been attending to, and here's how we're doing. And so that would be a far, it would be a far more focused report out on those, on those ends policies. Then currently, like today, it was, it was very big brush, what you looked at today, and I think that's important too. Think you always have the big brush, but then it's like digging into, okay, we said that we had some real concerns about numeracy and mathematics, our data showed that the, then, I'm just making something up, they looked at it, they're liking, you know, we had some real concerns about our kids' numeracy, uh, in our primary grades. So we're going to really dig into that this year, and they're going to share that with you as part of the continuous improvement plan. And then that would be what we report out on, so we're not going to see, probably in six months, this big thing is, you know, usually you'd make it a couple of years, that this is our goal, and this is what we're focusing on. But that's what you, you would expect the superintendent to share with you, here's what we're doing, here's the gains we're, we're making.
But would they be telling us how they were going to address those issues? I mean, are you going to say, this is the program we're using, or this is, you know?
They don't need to. They don't need to do that, um, because that's the means. What they need to do is to say, you know, we're, here's where we are, we're, we want to see a growth of, you know, we're going to shoot that, we want to see a ten percent growth in the performance around that, that numeracy than, than we've seen, that we have this year. And then that's up to them to figure out how they're doing that. So what they may request from you is, we're really finding that we'd want, we know that we've got a gap here, and we are requesting some additional program support. Or maybe we need, uh, some additional training, or professional development behind, you know, um, mathematical thinking. And so whatever it is that the leadership decides in their plan, because they're going to be, they're going to be tasked with, here's the problem, how am I going to fix it? What are the means? It may have a financial implication, which then they would share with you, because that should become priorities within your budget. So when you're, when you're operating, when you're, if you look, as you get to know the financial planning end of, so two point three, two point four, excuse me, under executive limitations is financial planning. And so you would expect that you have a commitment, if there is a financial requirement to address an ends issue, that that would be part of your budget discussion. And that should be brought to you by the superintendent. So we're headed into budget, we need some more support, we, maybe we need a new, maybe we decide we need a new math program. And you're going to see that reflected in the budget, because this is what we've decided is a means that we need to address this issue.
So are all the timelines going to hit? I mean, if there's a need, you know, hypothetically, I mean, do, do you see any problems with the, you know, you're coming to me and you say, you're going to need this money, but the budget's already, do you know what I mean? Like, I don't have the money, I'm sorry, because the budget, it's not in this budget, we have to wait another whole year, so what are you going to do in the meantime, kind of? I mean, I, I, it's just a scenario.
I mean, I think that's why, I think, yeah, but that's why I think you get in that, to that rhythm. So you get into that rhythm.
Okay.
When you're a policy governance board, you get into that rhythm that, um, you've, you're having that discussion in, you're getting a report out from your leadership team in July of what they're seeing for the future. So you really start to future think about this.
Okay, I know, that's fine.
And then you, as a board, in August, are looking at, okay, this is the recommendations they've made, we're headed into budget season in two months, they're requesting that we have some additional funding to support that. So you're a whole year out in front of that. I mean, that's, that's where we need to be operating, you know, that far in advance. And looking at, you know, what our kids need and what needs to be in the budget.
Tonight, we asked for further information on looking at progress of each student and how they're progressing. And I think he said he was going to get that information.
He can look at three years, yeah.
So, like, let's say we, we really wanted to zero in on that, because maybe we, as a board, feel that's a more accurate way to, to gauge it. So we get that information, would we then, would we be looking at, or we would task, like, you know, you know, for that to be talked about by the leadership committee?
When that, when that.
We don't actually, we, we want to report on that from the leader, you know, all right, here are the findings, and have them kind of go through that, and then report back to us, and maybe we come up with policies based on that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you're, so you're in this place right now where you're, you're, you're not, you're not policy governance, you haven't really, you know, you're in this messy place right now. But when I heard that request too, I'm like, well, if you really, I'm sure Brooke heard that, she's thinking about it, you know?
More accurate way.
That you're thinking about, you know, how do we, we want to make sure that we're looking at it as a system, and that, that that's something that I can respond to in the future, when that board asks that question, that we've considered that, that I know that that's part of how we're looking at that data. And, you know, they probably have looked at that data in that three, those three years. But, um, I think that would be, i- if you're, when you, when you are a policy governance board, I don't think you'd ask that type of question. I think that you would expect, because you've gone through the process of identifying, here, here's, the, or the, the, your school leadership has said, here's what we're focusing on our priorities, and here's what the data is telling us, and here's why we think this, and they're going to share that with you. This is what the data's saying. We want to pay attention to this. So you've been presented with that data and a chance to have input into that, but it's not like going out and said, we want some additional data. If you don't see happening what you need for kids, or you could say, in that monitoring, when here's the ends, here's what, so let me back, I, I think, I guess you could do that, because if I put in, if we say the monitoring, so let's play this out. Let's say that we play, let's play that out, just say we say monitoring, so let's take again numeracy. We want numeracy, and we want, you know, we need some more information about that. And so the monitoring, the interpretation of how we're going to monitor that is brought to, to the board. So this is how I interpret, um, how I'm going to monitor that. Here's the data I'm going to give you on numeracy. And you could say, we want a little bit more than that. So that would happen at that monitoring time, because for every policy, there's going to be a monitoring interpretation that goes along with that. And for your ends policy, once those priorities have been established, there, then, there's going to be a monitoring, interpretation of monitoring brought to you, this is how, what we're going to collect for evidence to show you. And that's when you would ask that question.
Could we then set a goal to say, you know, we want our goal to be that we're seeing an increase on individual students, you know, that they're, that they're, you know, you know, not, not specifying what that increased, but just that our goal is that we are seeing a steady increase, um, you know, in performance. You know, and, and not as a whole, but as individuals, because I think it's a more accurate.
So originally, on our continuous improvement plan this year, our leadership team wanted to say that all, like, all students will grow, and we really will take the time to look at that, but as far as reporting out to like that, there isn't like necessarily a chart or a graph that could do that, we would have to analyze every single kid and making sure they made growth, which still, we could figure out a way to do that. But as far as setting a, a smart goal, that doesn't fill the criteria, we need to be more specific, we can't just say all kids want to grow. Like, when we're setting a goal, it has to be very specific to a particular strain, like in math or literacy, and maybe a grade level. But just to say all students will grow, which is our hope, we all want that, and we'll look at that. But as far as like setting a goal for continuous improvement, it's too broad of a goal.
Well, no, when I say that, I mean, like, specifically for those, those areas that are showing weakness.
Yes.
That we determined, like, in those areas that we are seeing growth, because we need growth in.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be the mar, I mean, that's why you need to prioritize. I mean, you can't look at that and say, we're going to fix everything, because we won't fix anything. So, so you, you pick, you say, we're going to focus, here's, we, here's some high leverage places that we really need to pay attention to, because we, we haven't seen any growth, as a matter of fact, we've seen declining in performance over the last three years. So we need to pay attention to what the heck is going on here. So here's how we're going to monitor it, and here's what we're going to show you, the evidence that we're making growth. Okay? So that's how that works, and so that's what the interpretation would be in the monitoring that's presented to you. This is what we're going to show you, and here's, you know, so, and if it doesn't, you know, if you don't rebet, you might not, I mean, then you're going to say, okay, you got to go back, we're not satisfied with that. You've got to go back and, and dig into this some more, because we're not seeing what we need to see, you know? Okay? Good? Good conversation. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just point out that there is one thing, um, uh, that we missed, including on your agenda, and we will bring it back in March. You should have had the, um, adoption of that wellness revision on here. And we missed it, and I apologize, and.
I just thought we would just automatically, because this was the next meeting, I didn't realize.
It should have been there, it should have been there, it was missed, I'm sorry. So we'll make sure that's on the March meeting, okay? So we did, um, give, hand-deliver tonight just, um, a draft of FAQs. We'll be finalizing over, um, the next couple of days. We'll be finalizing these, and finalizing your whole report. It, um, we're slated to have that mailed out next week, right, Celeste? Are we mailing that away next week?
Well, that's, that's the plan, yes.
Okay. Because we mail all of yours, so we'll be, I mean, this is just the one piece, there's a lot more that's going to be in that, um, in the FAQ, in the annual report. But this is just the one piece on the FAQ, so, um, I think it might be worth, let's, I think we should take like five minutes, you read through it, and let, since there's anything you want, you know, give us some guidance, is there anything you want? And conceptually, we don't need to get into wordsmithing, but conceptually, is there something, um, you want that's not included?
Did everyone get a copy?
I think I passed it on. Yeah, sure, doesn't matter, um, it's all draft stuff, yeah.
And those pages will be in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any, any questions or thoughts? Again, you just, I mean, there'll be a lot more in that annual report, but these are, we just, we tried to pick up on the questions that you raised and things that were discussed throughout our budget process, and grab those.
Give me a second. Question 14, why is the Meadowley School District using $269,347 of the Tax Stabilization Fund to lower the tax rate? I think that's great. When I had written my report for the report, it's not really a letter, right?
Yeah.
Bob, thank you so much, pointed out that it, my letter, because I had put the information in there of how much we were using from our Tax Stabilization Fund to offset taxes, and it, I so greatly appreciated that he pointed out that I should also mention how much remains in the fund.
Okay.
So, I think it's great if we can say how, if, if under 14, or if we can add another question, how much remains, something about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, wherever. I'd like it, like, bolded, if we could. I mean, that was a really great catch, Bob, and I thank you for that. I think it's really important that people know that we still have, you know, 750, 740, 7 something.
And it might be good, I'm wondering, too, if we mentioned in there, Bob, you know, because we had kind of discussed this a little bit, that we had anticipated when we were engaging in merger, we had anticipated that we'd see a shift of about 25% of students moving to the choice, you know, that we've seen a shift in their choices for secondary, and that we talked about that the purpose of this fund would be to address those increases. And it's really what we anticipated, I think we had a 23%, 23% or something in a shift. So that might be good to include there. I think that might be, so people know that was the intent as to why we wanted to have that fund available.
I don't even know how I feel about my own point that I'm about to make, but I'm going to do it anyways.
You go for it.
Just maybe, like, we do have a little positivity in that our transportation budget has gone down, and I didn't know if that would be nice to, like, lay all a little good with the bad.
Yeah, and hasn't also our spent, our spending of the food services gone down?
Yeah. So I, and I, and I...
So we could do a question, where have we seen reductions?
Yeah.
Well, and I attribute some of that to, you know, our, it's kind of offsetting the cost of our assessments, and I, I think that we're reaping the benefits of the directors in those areas who are seeing where we can improve and cut. And I would love it if we could say that.
Okay. So where have we seen costs reduce? We can add a question in there?
And why?
And why?
You know, I think it's because of the directors who are really...
Some resistance to...
Yeah.
There was.
Well, I, I actually have fielded a few of those questions of, in the past week or two, and I've said, hey, wait just a minute. You know, you're right, we're spending money on that, but when you look at the budget, you'll see that we've, we're also saving money because of them.
Yeah. Okay? If you have any other thoughts, shoot, have to be quick, but shoot us a, shoot us an email. So Brooke just pointed out that I skipped over, this was based, I skipped over C on, under my report, and I did include in your packet, because there seemed to be interest when we, after our session with Val. So I just pulled out one of, you know, there were a couple there, and I pulled out this board meeting self-evaluation, because I thought at least we could have a discussion tonight, is it something you want to do? And if you do, is there somebody, you know, Val had suggested a couple of different approaches. She said someone in the, on the board could collect these, you know, you could, you could debrief at the end of each meeting, and then one board member takes it on to be the collector of that, and maybe, you know, three times a year, two times a year, they kind of report out, here's the trends, here's what I'm seeing. So you've kind of gotten at, I think I, I think that was a 4.1, it really gets that 4.1 as some monitoring in that, you know, that governing. So it's something you could try, you, you know, if you wanted to play around with that and see if that works for you. I just thought I'd put that on the agenda, and you could have a discussion about that to see if that, you know, works or not. And I want to point out, on question number four on that tool, you can fully expect that you're, you're, you're not even, you haven't even committed to policy governance yet, and even when you have, and I'll have this discussion with T and G tomorrow night, if you look at, there's a continuum of where you are, well, of continuum of growth as a policy governance board, and you will be an emerging board for, you know, a couple of years. You will be. And so, so if, when, you know, in three years, you might want to say, oh, yeah, we definitely spent enough time on community engagement ends and executive limitations, but it's good to have that there, because you know those are the three things that you should be attending to. So are you, are you attending to them? And you may be saying no to two of them, you know, for quite a while. But I, I do think it's important to keep it, so just as a reminder that, you know, at some point, we'll get to a place where, yeah, we're really spending sufficient time on all of those issues. So that's why I didn't pull it out, you know, I thought about, should I yank that out? I'm like, nah, I think it's good to keep that there, keeps it on your mind. So anyways, I just, you know, thought you might want to discuss, do you want to do this, yay, nay?
I'm, I'm off work. Yes?
I'm obviously not going to be here, but I really think it, it, it's a force for you to be reflective as a board, and I think it's really, you know, being reflective and self-monitoring is most productive when you do it in the moment versus, how have we been for the past three months? You know, so from my perspective, yeah, it needs to be done, but...
Any thoughts, Julie? Any thoughts? I'm just...
I'm, I'm fine with doing it, I, the only even moment of hesitation that I had was, should we just wait until it's starting in March when we've become a new board? We'll have at least one new member, but...
I think we suggest maybe April, because March is really kind of an odd meeting as your organizational. So there's not really, the, the only thing you're going to really have different of agenda would be your approving of that wellness, you know? So I think maybe in April, you say, yeah, we're going to start doing that. Well, we could discuss in March, who wants to be the collector of this?
Right.
You know? The keeper of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like a new job, a new job for the, on the board, really.
Yeah, right.
So that goes on the March agenda, right?
Yeah, sure.
So Jackie, for our annual meeting, I know last year we, we talked about who was going to, motion and whatever, do we want to do that?
Yeah, that's right. So we did just, we're reaching out to, so I did give you a copy, boy, I'm kind of disorganized tonight, I don't know what's wrong with me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping all over the place here, I apologize. You're right, I'm missing things. So I did give you a copy of your annual meeting thing. So we do need to, so our moderator's been John Thrasher, our district clerk, Deb Hawkins, and our district treasurer, Judy Zinn. So Celeste has shot an email to those three folks to see if they're interested in continuing the work. But we should have, what's good is to have someone, I think we made a plan last year of who was going to make...
We did.
Who was going to move that.
Right.
So...
Do we have a recommended date for that 2021 annual meeting? We'll want to do, have that.
Yeah, so we'll give a date.
It's a long ways away.
We should look at that.
It is a long ways away, but I'm going to pull my calendar up.
Somebody have a...
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
You're doing it right now?
You're pulling it up?
The 24th is a Wednesday.
Yeah. 24th, 2/24? Yeah. 2/24, 1/1.
And that would be at the Meadowley School.
Right.
Yeah.
7:00 PM.
So we will need someone to, see if we get it, someone to make those first four motions.
That's not, that doesn't fall within that President's Day week, that would be the week before, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I'll make two of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind making them either, so...
Yeah, I'll do it.
Just pick, just say...
I'll do three.
You'll do three.
Doing three. And do they need to be second, they need to be seconded as well?
Yeah, that won't be a problem.
Yeah, one of us could just...
Okay.
I'll do, I can do four.
Okay.
And...
Julie?
Does anyone else want to do some before we take them all?
Okay. Lori's going to do two. Scott, you're going to do one?
Yeah, I'm confused.
You're going to, you're going to nominate?
You're going to make...
They'll say we're going to elect the moderator, and then you say, I nominate...
I'd like to nominate.
Oh, gotcha, sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, so we're good?
Yep.
So we will get confirmation that those are the folks that want to do that, hopefully they still want to do it.
And Celeste will send us an email so we know.
So you know.
Who's doing number three?
Diane.
Diane.
Okay, so it's Judy Zinn.
Oh, she is. It is. Okay.
She said yes.
She's fast, great.
Okay, good. Perfect. So we'll get confirmation on the first two, and then we'll let you know. Okay? Very good. And then as far as, you know, I know you'll probably start off the meeting with, you know, some highlights, just like you did last year. Sue and I will be there to support in any way with any questions that may come up, we're there.
I have a panic attack.
It'll be good. And Julie, you are going to do your thing.
When you start off, should I, should that be when I, in my soapbox? Okay. I just, I guess what my goal, I sort of just scratched out something, was that I wanted to mention, but you probably will mention, so maybe I won't do this, but the biggest increases of the budget, 95% of them are the increased insurance costs and the increased costs due to secondary education, which we knew was coming post-merger, and that those were out of our control. And as far as everything else, we were very careful and thoughtful in our budgeting process because we know the hardship of increasing education spending on our communities, and I'd like to ask for your thoughtfulness at the polls. I believe that all of my fellow board members are involved because we care deeply about education. For me, it is hugely important part of our society. I've occasionally heard the phrase, I don't use the schools, and I'd like to argue that you do, all of us do. Whether our kids or grandkids are long grown, we have kids in the system now, or we have never and will never have kids. From getting correct change made at a store, to going to a doctor for life-saving interventions, and everything in between requires a solid education. We all pay to educate our society because it makes for a better society. Please keep this in mind when you're voting on our budget, thank you.
I passed.
I like it, okay.
So how do you want to organize that? When do you want, so, how do you want that to play out?
When do I say it? I don't know, you're going to bring up some highlights of things?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to first speak about how we've continued to operate as a board. And, and then I'll bring up some, some highlights of the budget. I, I had, I had planned on speaking to, you know, where the, where the greatest increases come from, but I think it's okay if you reiterate that, I think it's okay if you say it again.
Her voice is wonderful. I, I agree.
And during that, would you bring up the areas that we've saved, too?
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you, thank you for reminding, yes.
No, no, I think that was a very good point that we, you know, the parts that are under our control that we've, you know, been very careful and had some good savings, you know?
And I mean, and you also, remember, you, you're using attrition to...
Yeah, well, that's the most important...
To respond, yeah, to respond to, you've had, you have had declining enrollment over time, and you're, you're paying attention to that, and you're, you know, using attrition to...
It's huge.
Would we actually point out that savings, because it's so substantial, or I guess?
Yeah, I mean, your savings of a position, I mean, that was, it was close to $100,000.
It was.
Yeah.
And, and wasn't that even a fairly substantial impact, like, in the actual tax rate?
It was.
I wonder if it's worth...
I don't remember what that percent is.
Well, Sue could, if I emailed that to Sue's a little bit... You could tell me exactly what that was. Yeah, she would, she would let me know that.
Yeah. That's important.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a transportation...
Remember, because that, that is, that's quite, because it's, aren't you something close to, I'm in front of me, it's a few cents.
I thought it was more than that.
It was more, I think it was like...
I thought it was close to five.
I thought it was five or so.
I thought it was close to five cents.
I think it's close to... I think your $24,000 is a penny for you, so it might be four cents or so.
Four cents.
Well, she'll confirm, but that's a pretty...
Yep. Well, she said the 200 and something was eight cents, so it was close to four.
Yeah. That's significant.
Julie, another point that you made in a meeting once that really resonated with me was that you talked about, when you're voting on a school budget, that... me was that you talked about, when you're voting on a school budget, that, you know, you don't want to support something that's crap.
Right.
You know, I mean, you have to believe in what you're supporting, so there's a balance there. I mean, you cut where you can, but you don't want to cut to the point where you don't have a good product, you know? And then, of course, the importance of the product. So I think, you know, that's a, that was a really good point you made at the meeting too.
Yeah.
It is good, that is a good point. Get that in there. If you can.
I will.
Okay.
Work plan, there's nothing, I just, I always include that, okay?
All right. So just teaching and learning, just an update, there's a lot of teachers taking lots of professional development. I didn't even include all of them. I got them a few minutes later after I kind of submitted my importance to Celeste, but I will highlight them next month. So, so Waterhouse is taking a few courses. There's a lot of horizontal team meetings for all teachers, but Jean Pritchard, you know, just recently came back and talked about the value of being together with her colleagues. Mandy Thomas took a course, I wanted to point that out because I couldn't remember the name of the title when we had her viewing of the film, but she was taking this one multicultural children's literature course that really impacted her teaching and helping to support and to build the knowledge and values and beliefs of our students in our school. And she highlighted a few things that they, you know, they were able to really build and understand and raise awareness and honor differences. And I think that was really a good point that we are continuing to bring information into our schools and books and different perspective-taking, and it's really important for us to continue to do that so our learners are able to understand the big picture besides their small towns here. And report cards will be coming out shortly, doesn't seem possible. Second trimester report cards will be going home March 19th. I wanted to just kind of, you know, acknowledge the hard work our Medowee teachers are participating in, are in-service every Friday. It's going really well. Last week really focused on the KUDs, but overall they're working hard on reading a book, Standard-Based Classroom, collaborating with their colleagues, and then creating a unit plan template that will be shared out with our staff, but also as the BRSC are, we're thinking about, today we talked about our in-service in March and having the teachers across the school share their unit plans. I think it will be very valuable for them to see other examples. Geography B always held in January. We had, our winner actually is, of our school, is Maddox Johnson in fourth grade, so that was kind of exciting. And he'll be taking the placement test and we will know whether or not he'll be going on to the state B the next couple, well, he will know by the end of the month, by the end of February. So it's kind of exciting. And Woodchuck Festival was held here last weekend. I think it's great, the community comes to support our local fire departments. Building updates, we have, someone comes through and do a walkthrough with us to help us with our new phones. The speakers are kind of quiet and hard for the classroom teachers to hear, all pages. So we are installing speakers in the month of March just to make sure the messages are loud and clear. Another event for the community, I want to mention that Rob Terry works for Merck Forest and together we've talked about a vision of our land next to our school. I want to celebrate by saying Merck has officially purchased the land.
Woo-hoo!
And we are really going to work hard to engage you, the board members, staff and students the next couple of months. And we're hoping to talk about a vision of what we hope we could use the land for. And that plan will be developed by June and we're going to be sending that off to the Vermont Land Trust, but we really want to get the kids engaged with what they hope that we could do with that land and.
That would be great.
Offer some things, and some of the things that Rob and I brainstormed together, it's just having like a moonwalk, which they do in Merck, but bringing it down here so that families have access to walk this land for the moonwalk and talking about some hiking trails and having kids, I want my kids involved with.
How much land is it?
Like, say 140 acres or something.
Wow, that's awesome.
The biggest thing he'll highlight, he wants to come to present, but like just the different diverse habitats that we have. It's like a very interesting land from their point of view of all the different things that we can show and teach and have the kids, you know, just be involved with. So I'm really excited about that. We, I asked, I talked to him about it a few years ago and just the fact that he's worked so hard behind the scenes and so much collaboration with Vermont Land Trust and, but we want to paint this big picture, what is, what are some thoughts that we can really do with that land? And I think that, you know, so our hope is to present to you either March or April, depending on what works for the agenda. We're going to do an all-school meeting where they'll come and the kids hopefully will present from their classrooms some of the visions they have. And then we want to do a couple of community forums here where it's student-led with hopefully maybe a board member and other people. So, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, that would be awesome.
Battling naturalists do it though.
Yeah. Yeah, students engaging that. And then really having them, you know, thinking in the fall, what are some of the things, like our couple of goals that we would have set. So with last spring, we had Merck come and do a Merck Day here. And I'll, they actually, the staff created an album for me, but just how engaged our students were. And Merck came here as, as well as staff and students, creating different stations that the kids could explore, but it was a very positive day. So we're hoping to do that again this May. And one of our hopes is to do a staff exploration, to go to the land and do things as a staff, and then shortly after that, do that with our students. So we have a timeline planned from this night moving forward, how we're going to engage different parts of our community. And, you know, eventually we're hoping to like build a bridge, like maybe from the behind, like by the, well, right now it's, there's a barriers getting us to the land is going to be quite like a walk at times, but if we can create some shortcuts so that, you know, classes could walk out there even during a short period of time and then come back. So we are really excited about the opportunity and looking forward to kind of engaging you first, the staff, the students, and then community. So.
It's wonderful.
I'm excited for that.
It's really exciting.
And the last thing I wanted to say is thank you to all of you for really supporting our school and the dedication. And I know that in a way that's kind of, this month closes a year for you, but just like we really see their commitment to ensuring all students are successful in our school and it doesn't go unrecognized. I always talk about how supportive you are and that really helps promote learning for all of us within our community. So thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you need somebody for the Wellness Committee?
Yeah, I was going to state that once when you talked about it earlier in the, I was hoping to see if there was any board members that would be interested in being on the Health and Wellness meeting. And we were hoping to meet in the next few months just to make sure everything's set for the following year. But if you're interested, just let me know. You don't have to stay tonight, but I'd like to have one member that joins us. I'm thinking there'll be just one meeting and then we'll probably set another one, but every year we have to have at least one or two meetings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board updates? Anyone?
Let me see. Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, the BRSC. I know, I was like, yeah, I've got something.
I was going to say, someone's got to mention that.
I know, right. So the, the BRSC board met 30th of January and did an interview and then we unanimously decided to offer a superintendent position to Randy Lowe. She's been our assistant superintendent, but she nailed it and I'm looking forward to it. She'll do a good job.
And she is awesome at data.
Yes.
So she's much better than I am at data. So she is, she will, you're going to love it.
She talked a lot about that.
Yeah, she's really good at it. The special ed in her, I think. She's just very, she can get very focused on that, which I think is going to be really good for the organization.
And she was just enthused.
Oh, yeah.
Bubbly enthused and, and that was important because you wouldn't want somebody to sit there and, yeah, you know, not come across as, yeah, I've got this, you know? And she came across as, I truly want this and give me the opportunity and I'll show you what you can do and I like that.
And the great news, a lot of, she knows our organization and she knows the schools and a lot of the staff and students and so that's.
How long has she been assistant superintendent?
Well, she's been my assistant for the last four years and I'm trying to remember how long I've worked with her. Boy, she's been here for quite a seven or eight.
Seven, she said seven.
Seven or 2013, I read. Because I worked with her before that one.
2013, yeah, I read it.
Assistant, I worked with her.
Yeah.
But she also sounded very, like she would be innovative, you know? She, she wasn't just going to be following, you know? She was, she's, I think, made a really good point of, at least from my point of view, making me believe that she was her own person. I'm going to do this and I'm going to bring to the table, you know, which I think is also good. I think you have to take what you've learned and, and because you do, are familiar with, you can do a really good, but, you know, I noticed this based on data.
Yeah.
And I think that that was very, good to know that she was looking to the future.
Yeah.
And I thought that that was good. Yeah.
Absolutely. I feel the same way I said to her today, I said at our principals' meeting that I feel so good because I feel like it's like when you're in those relay races, like you're passing the baton to the, like, okay, it's so good for some new blood that has a new skill set that can do some really good work. And I think she's a good match for what the organization needs right now.
You must feel good about that, Jackie.
Yeah, I do feel good about it.
Makes it easier.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it'll make the transit, it gives us an opportunity, you know?
Yeah.
To, we're already talking, we're going to need this week, like just even think, be really thoughtful about transition and, you know, how we, you know, and I'll always be there for her.
Yeah.
You know?
And she, yeah.
We work all together.
She knows how to ask people for help and that's important.
Yep.
You know, you can't do it by yourself.
Yep.
Great. Okay. I'm just kind of curious as to, I thought that the Martha Allen night was very well attended. I was pleased with the numbers of folks that we had there. And I'm just curious as to a next step, I guess.
Now, we haven't had a chance to talk about it because it's on my.
I know there's a lot of other things going on. I'm wondering if maybe that would be on the March or the April agenda or if maybe Brooke want, I, I'm not even certain how the next step should play out. Other than that, from my perspective, I'd like to see the community continue to be brought in from time to time.
My thought, I think that, that I was sitting there and thinking and have thought, you know, I'm on the library board and I thought, you know, they're, want to really try to engage the community. I mean, they've done the strategic plan and, and I think it would fit in there nicely and they would get a whole different group of people.
Oh.
And I, I think that.
Show it like at the library?
Show it at the library, do it in different kinds of ways, but make it something that we can bring to the community because I'm sure we would, we have a good core group of people, but it would be a very different group.
Yeah.
And I was intrigued also, I wanted to mention at the library or in the community, the book that the gentleman read. I want to look into getting that and, and maybe thinking, okay, can we start a book club? You know, because the library also, you know, you can just do that. So those are two things I was thinking of to follow up with because I didn't want it to stop.
Right, neither do I.
I mean, and I think the part, it made me, you know, think about, I've requested to put it on the next agenda for my superintendence meeting because I just, you know, we spent last year talking about these issues as a superintendence group and I really want, I just want more information. Okay, so what have you done?
Mm-hmm.
Like, so when you, you know, what are some suggestions for next step? So that's like on my radar to, to get some input from folks because I, you know, there is, I mean, there's a new law, there was a law that was passed that's requiring, and I can't remember the name of, I can't remember the name of the law, what it was called, but there is a law that's requiring now, the curriculum.
Yeah, I think I read the same.
Yes.
Yep.
Curriculum in.
I wondered if that's.
In, you know, a more equitable approach to curriculum. So that's, that's, that's going to have huge teeth in it. So I mean, this is going to happen.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I think from the school perspective, the schools are going to really kind of be forced to deal with that. So I think that that's where that impetus will come to do that work.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's a, there's right now, they're in conversation about implementation around that. There's a subcommittee.
Yeah, I remember, I read.
So I'll look into that and give you, I'm not being very articulate tonight, but I'll get you some information on what that, what that statute says, so you can take a look at it. So I think that that's a place where that will just is going to naturally happen.
There's a few educational articles I have found since that discussion that I will bring to my staff to discuss. Right now, my, my set is to get through until March. I already have every in-service planned, but definitely this spring having a few articles in mind. There's also a series that was emailed to me yesterday, that Higher Collaborative is offering like six workshops all around these topics. The first few, I'm not sure that would work for us, but there is a one in March and one in April, and both of them align to next steps within educational settings. I don't know the names of the topics, but I sent that to my, a few people within the organization and hopefully we can get a couple of people to go to those. They're relatively inexpensive PDs and they're one-day workshops. And Paul, the one that's kind of done other things within our state, I've gone to a couple of his trainings, he is part of the keynote for some of those, so.
Are you part of the group? I know Randy's doing, she did the two-year, she's in that equity cohort.
No, because I was already engaged with financial committee before, it's less family.
Right, so Randy's in, and I'll find out some more about that too. And she might be able to speak to that. She couldn't make it tonight, but I'm sure she'll, I'm sure you'll start seeing her show up. Randy's in part of a two-year cohort that's looking at equity issues in schools and so I know we heard some, a little bit of pushback, oh, it's not equity. Well, I beg to differ, there's, you know, there's equity issues around that too. So I know she's involved with something, you know, with some work and expanding her own learning in that and thinking about what that means for schools, so that's another place. So we've got a lot of things like churning right now and we'll bring some more information back.
I'm just wondering, I mean, one of the, one of the points of that movie was that, was that all districts should have, and I don't remember if he said a five or a 10-year plan to address this? And I'm not suggesting that we like come up with a plan in our, our next couple of meetings, but maybe with the information that we're gathering, that you're gathering and Brooke is gathering, we can start to potentially formulate a work plan around this.
And I think too, that kind of gets, I mean, you're going to want to as a board revisit your ends policies. Is there something in ends that speaks to that? You know what I mean? That's the place where it kind of should go because then you're going to, you know, say that, yeah, well, you know, then you, then you're just going to have to have a plan that addresses and some steps and means to get to that. So I think you're going to want to revisit your, you're going to want to revisit your ends period. I think that would be something for you to do next year because some of the language around, you're going to want that transferable skill language to make its way into your ends. So you don't have to go through a full-blown process again, but you might want to revisit some of that.
So, one of the titles, for instance, that was sent to me a couple of days ago, is "Equity Awareness to Equity Action: Instituting Educational Justice in Vermont Schools and Communities." It's a one-day workshop, writing schools of racism, uh, writing schools of racism from equity to action. So, it, it's March twenty-fourth, and it's in South Burlington, so it's not too far, and it's only fifty dollars. So, it's very affordable to have a few people go to, like, a few of the workshops that are being offered in Vermont.
Awesome.
Okay. So, your next meeting date is March ninth here, at six-thirty, with a new board member, at least one, right? And our annual meeting is February twenty-sixth at seven PM at the Rupert Firehouse. I will make certain that they're ready for us.
I was like, who sets up for that?
The fire department. And they'll have it set up, because I don't know what town day town meeting is, to be quite honest, in Rupert, what the pre-town meeting night is in Rupert. But they'll have it set up for that as well. Okay, reflection on norms.
Yep. Can I ask you, it's tied to that, because you, because at the March meeting, we always do a draft for you of meeting dates and locations, and I'm not sure how to proceed with setting meetings at the, at the library, where you were our person.
Right. Well, Pat Mullin is the library's director. I can give you her email address. It's P. Mull, I can't give you her email address.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The path that you...
Oh, yeah, sure.
I can't give you her email address off the top of my head. I can give you her home phone number off the top of my head. Would that help? I'll get it to you. I'll get you her, I'll get you her address.
Okay. I just don't know how feasible it's going to be to make that work.
I think it will be, I did, I have spoken with her, and actually, Judy Zinn is the chairperson of the library board right now.
Okay.
And I've spoken with her about it.
Okay.
So, either way, either of those individuals could be contacted, and I don't believe, there's so little that goes on at the library in the evenings...
Okay.
That I don't think that any dates that you select will be an issue.
All right.
I really don't.
And how will we get in?
Well, that is, that's going to be...
That's more what I was interested in.
Yeah, I think a Rupert library board, or a Rupert School Board member's going to have to have a key, I guess. Or maybe the, you know, I think, I think that...
There is no Rupert School Board member.
A Medowee School Board member from Rupert. That's really what I meant. I meant a Rupert member.
A wise guy at this hour.
A Rupert School Board member. A member of the board from Rupert. Same words, just in a different... I, I honestly, I guess that would probably be up to the school, up, up to the library board as to how they would, whether or not they would want to see that key. Whether or not they want to, my guess is they'll want to give that key to either the chair of this board or a Rupert member from this board. I know they're in the process of rekeying right now, anybody, because what happens, honestly, you know, and I can speak to this, 'cause I'm on that board, keys get out, and keys get out, and keys get out, and then we find, honestly, we find people in the library.
Is that a bad thing?
Off hours. Off hours. Off hours, because they had a key from years ago, kind of, so I know they're in the, I know, we are in the process of rekeying right now, anyway.
Wow.
But, so I guess it'll be up to them to decide who gets a key. I'm guessing they will give a key to one person on this board, and...
The annual meeting, that starts at seven, right?
Yep. But Jackie, I'll, I'll do some legwork on that and, and, and send you an email.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, no worries, that's, those are, those are all good things. I agree, I agree with that, and I have been thinking about it. Okay, would anyone care to reflect on our norms?
Sure. I'll do that. As a board, focus on student outcomes, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, and run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules.
So, how do we do? We did pretty good.
We did pretty well, except for the time.
Well, we covered a lot. We're, we're just a tiny bit over, but I think we covered a lot, so...
Yeah, we did. It was a lot.
And I think, honestly, I think that when you're practicing your policy governance, you're probably going to run over a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, that's just meaty, and it's, that's time-consuming, right?
Yeah. Could have easily gone a lot longer.
I guess so. I think so, too. Okay. Meeting adjourned at eight forty-four. Oh, I didn't say public comment, but...
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.